No matter what age your child is, you want the best for their future. What do they want to do after graduation? What career path do they want to take? These questions can be overwhelming. That's why you should ask them this question. What's your E? Seminole County Public Schools' E-Pathway program is designed for your student to choose their own path in life from as many options as we can offer. Whether they're looking to enlist, enroll, or be employed, we're excited to help you and your child make it happen. Want them to enroll in a college or university? We'll help you find the best school for them to continue their education. Learn about grants and programs to help your child obtain their degree at a pace and a cost that works for you both. Are they looking to go straight into employment? Discover a variety of trades and skills that will propel their future. They can learn aviation maintenance, automotive repair, culinary arts, and more to hone their talents in growing industries. Is your child interested in enlistment? We'll help them find the right path of service, whether it's military, law enforcement, fire response, or EMS. They can serve the community while learning skills that will last a lifetime. What's your E? Explore options with E-Pathways by visiting us online at the link below.
What inspired me to get into engineering was LEGO. So I started as a kid, as most kids do, working with LEGOs and just kind of doing your own thing, building the LEGO sets. And I would often take apart my LEGO sets, mix them together, and build something completely new. Then, in about 4th grade, I was introduced to LEGO robotics, which is where you have an actual robot that you could program. And you start with this brick, and that would feed information to LEGO motors, and it would all communicate as a system, and you could do a lot of really cool robotic tasks with that. And that was really the start of me looking into engineering. The engineering I'm looking to pursue at first is mechanical engineering. This is what I'm going to go to UCF for, and this is going to be the start of my career. A mechanical engineer can really do anything. They work with a lot of thermodynamics and a lot of vibrations and really just anything that moves. So a lot of fields use mechanical engineering. I wanted to go past that and specialize into biomedical engineering, which is more along the lines of surgical robotics and medical machinery. I wanted to develop surgical robots, and with that, I need to know exactly how the human body functions and how it functions with robotic systems. Essentially, I'll be able to design a system where a person will be able to communicate with a motor and hopefully improve their quality of life, whether this be through a surgical robot that a doctor is controlling, or whether it's prosthetic that's motorized.
I taught Josh his freshman year. He was so good with that inventor material. He picked up on it very quickly. He was ready to jump in and help other students, which I really, really appreciated. And he has carried those characteristics with him as he is moving through the program. And now, with his journey moving forward in bioengineering, I can't wait to see what he's going to make with his knee brace and the orthotics that he's trying to produce.
The current prosthetic I'm looking at developing is a load-bearing knee brace in which I'm going to take a motor or servo and attach that to the knee, which will enable the, a person to be able to push past what their muscles currently are able to do, whether that be because of muscle fatigue or osteoarthritis in the kneecap where they're not able to put a lot of pressure on their knee. Current knee braces really only work when walking. There's still a lot of pain when there's extra forces being applied to the knee, such as walking upstairs or standing up from sitting down, things you and I normally don't think about. But for someone that has severe arthritis in their knee, this is hugely painful.
The strongest advantages of project-based learning, that hands-on experience that allows you to manipulate that material, really solidifies in the brain exactly how those things work.
The thing I would say about this program where it exceeds the most is the more you use it, the more it'll benefit you.
No matter what age your child is, you want the best for their future. What do they want to do after graduation? What career path do they want to take? These questions can be overwhelming. That's why you should ask them this question. What's your E? Seminole County Public Schools' E-Pathway program is designed for your student to choose their own path in life from as many options as we can offer. Whether they're looking to enlist, enroll, or be employed, we're excited to help you and your child make it happen. Want them to enroll in a college or university? We'll help you find the best school for them to continue their education. Learn about grants and programs to help your child obtain their degree at a pace and a cost that works for you both. Are they looking to go straight into employment? Discover a variety of trades and skills that will propel their future. They can learn aviation maintenance, automotive repair, culinary arts, and more to hone their talents in growing industries. Is your child interested in enlistment? We'll help them find the right path of service, whether it's military, law enforcement, fire response, or EMS. They can serve the community while learning skills that will last a lifetime. What's your E? Explore options with E-Pathways by visiting us online at the link below.
What inspired me to get into engineering was LEGO. So I started as a kid, as most kids do, working with LEGOs and just kind of doing your own thing, building the LEGO sets. And I would often take apart my LEGO sets, mix them together, and build something completely new. Then, in about 4th grade, I was introduced to LEGO robotics, which is where you have an actual robot that you could program. And you start with this brick, and that would feed information to LEGO motors, and it would all communicate as a system, and you could do a lot of really cool robotic tasks with that. And that was really the start of me looking into engineering. The engineering I'm looking to pursue at first is mechanical engineering. This is what I'm going to go to UCF for, and this is going to be the start of my career. A mechanical engineer can really do anything. They work with a lot of thermodynamics and a lot of vibrations and really just anything that moves. So a lot of fields use mechanical engineering. I wanted to go past that and specialize into biomedical engineering, which is more along the lines of surgical robotics and medical machinery. I wanted to develop surgical robots, and with that, I need to know exactly how the human body functions and how it functions with robotic systems. Essentially, I'll be able to design a system where a person will be able to communicate with a motor and hopefully improve their quality of life, whether this be through a surgical robot that a doctor is controlling, or whether it's prosthetic that's motorized.
I taught Josh his freshman year. He was so good with that inventor material. He picked up on it very quickly. He was ready to jump in and help other students, which I really, really appreciated. And he has carried those characteristics with him as he is moving through the program. And now, with his journey moving forward in bioengineering, I can't wait to see what he's going to make with his knee brace and the orthotics that he's trying to produce.
The current prosthetic I'm looking at developing is a load-bearing knee brace in which I'm going to take a motor or servo and attach that to the knee, which will enable the, a person to be able to push past what their muscles currently are able to do, whether that be because of muscle fatigue or osteoarthritis in the kneecap where they're not able to put a lot of pressure on their knee. Current knee braces really only work when walking. There's still a lot of pain when there's extra forces being applied to the knee, such as walking upstairs or standing up from sitting down, things you and I normally don't think about. But for someone that has severe arthritis in their knee, this is hugely painful.
The strongest advantages of project-based learning, that hands-on experience that allows you to manipulate that material, really solidifies in the brain exactly how those things work.
The thing I would say about this program where it exceeds the most is the more you use it, the more it'll benefit you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. I'd like to call to order the school board meeting for Tuesday, September 16, 2025. Please let the record reflect that school board members Sanchez, member Dellinger, member Davis, vice chair Garrick, and myself are present, along with superintendent Beaman, attorney Cole Palmer, and our wonderful Jill. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Minnie Cardona, and she will, she will tell us about a fabulous student.
Yes, I will. Good evening. I'm superintendent Beaman and school board members. At this time, it is a great honor that I introduce a wonderful senior from Lake Brantley High School, Omaris Valentin. This young lady is one of our success stories from the ESOL program. She exited from the program, went through the whole program, and now, as a senior, is just taking advantage of our wonderful advanced opportunities that we offer in Seminole County. So she's going to be talking a little bit about that and kick off our Hispanic Heritage Month. So Omaris, come on up.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Omaris Gabriela Valentin Sanabria. I am a senior at Lake Brantley High School and this year's Latinos in Action Leadership Class president. I am truly honored to be here and extremely thank you, thankful to Minnie Cardona for the invitation. Through my high school career, I have taken advantage of the advanced opportunities that Lake Brantley High School has to offer. In my sophomore year, I took AP Spanish Lang. In my junior year, I took AP Spanish Lit and AP US History, and I'm currently taking three more APs: AP Macroeconomics, AP US Government, and AP Literature. I have decided to take advantage of the opportunities that Lake Brantley High School gives to their students and challenge myself in taking these AP classes, even though English is not my first language. I may speak Spanish, both Spanish and English fluently, but Spanish will always be my first spoken language and my strong form of communication. As to taking advantage of the opportunities at Lake Brantley High School, I have been part of the Latinos in Action Leadership Class for the past three years, making it to being the president this year. This leadership program has helped me grow so much, not only in my leadership skills, but in my social, academics, and in my personal life as well. Apart from being in LIA, I have also been part of the National Spanish Honor Society for three years now, with the goal of achieving my seal of bilinguism. I am truly grateful for all these opportunities that Lake Brantley High School and Seminole County has offered me and other students. I am certain that this will open many doors in our future. On another note, I am hoping for you all to join us celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, starting this week to October 15, a time to honor our vibrant Hispanic and Latino families across the country. At Lake Brantley High School, our Latinos in Action class hosts an exciting Hispanic Heritage Festival every year during both lunches. This wonderful event showcases our rich school student body and brings our school community together in celebration. I've sent out invitations to all the board members here, and Ms. Pagan and I are, will love to see you there to join in the festivities and share a fantastic time with us. At this time, I will ask all of you to please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the invitation. I'll make sure to look for that and we'll all look and RSVP. We appreciate that very much. Jill, do we have any acknowledgement forms? Okay. Okay. Superintendent, do you have any agenda modifications?
Yes, Chair, I do. The addenda for a good cause is marked on our electronic agenda as addendum item. I'm also pulling three items. Item 2B, the Administrator Introduction; 6BE, the MOU for Lake Mary High School; 6AL, the finance item relating to water treatment plant. So pulling those three from the, the agenda.
Okay. Board members, do you have any modifications? Member Sanchez?
No modifications, thank you.
Vice Chair Garrick?
No modifications. Superintendent, can you please repeat the MOU for Lake Brantley?
6BE.
Thank you. Oh, perfect. Thank you. No further modifications.
Thank you. Member Dellinger?
None, thank you.
Member Davis?
No modifications.
And, and I have no modifications. Is there a motion to approve the agenda outline?
So moved, second.
Member Dellinger, member Sanchez, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Superintendent, do we have recognitions and presentations?
Yes, we have. Our Veteran of the Month recommendation, presentation today, and that is Mr. Ronald Dilts, who will be introduced by Sanford Middle School Dean, Ms. Brennan.
Thank you, members.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cindy Brennan. I'm the Assistant Principal at Sanford, and it's my pleasure to speak on behalf of Dr. Sergeant Ronald E. Dilts, who is a proud veteran of the United States Army Reserves and a lifelong advocate for education and youth development. A graduate of the University of Florida in 1985, Dr. Dilts answered the call to serve his country in 1987, joining the US Army Reserves. He completed basic training at Fort Knox, Kentucky, where his leadership qualities quickly earned him the roles of squad leader and later platoon leader. He continued his military training at Fort Jackson in South Carolina, specializing as a personnel actions specialist, again, rising to leadership positions within his unit. Following his advanced training, Dr. Dilts was assigned to the 442nd Personnel Services Unit in Orlando, Florida. His responsibilities included maintaining military personnel records, processing promotions and reclassifications, and managing the production and distribution of military identification materials. His dedication and excellence led to two promotions within three years. In a defining moment of his military career, Sergeant Dilts and his unit were activated to serve in the Persian Gulf War. After nine months of honorable service, he returned safely to the United States. For his outstanding leadership and commitment, he was awarded the Army Commendation Medal, the National Defense Service Medal, and the Southwest Asia Service Medal, testaments to his courage and dedication to our nation. Driven by a deep desire to continue making a positive impact, Dr. Dilts transitioned into the field of education. He has dedicated over 24 years to shaping young minds, including 15 years in public education, 13 of which have been right here in Seminole County schools as Dean of Students and Discipline, and nine years in private education, serving as both a principal and classroom teacher. His mission has always been to provide students with strong, positive male role models who instill self-pride, discipline, and confidence. Dr. Dilts's academic achievements are equally impressive. He holds an MBA from Webster University 2001, an educational specialist degree from Argosy University 2007, and a Doctor of Education from National Lewis University in 2020. Beyond his professional and military accomplishments, Dr. Dilts is a devoted family man. He and his wife Emma, who is here this evening, recently celebrated 42 years of marriage. Yes, that deserves a round of applause. Together, they have raised four children and are the proud grandparents of five grandsons and one granddaughter, who I'm assuming is very spoiled. Dr. Sergeant Ronald E. Dilts exemplifies the values of service, leadership, and lifelong learning. We are honored to recognize him as our Veteran of the Month. Thank you.
I didn't. Superintendent, do we have a focus on student?
Yes, we do. We have Ms. Cardona and team that will come up to provide our Focus on Student Achievement.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Vanessa Brewster, ESOL curriculum specialist. Thank you, ladies. So we will start by celebrating and acknowledging that, yes, we are celebrating Hispanic Month. It starts on September 15. It started yesterday, all the way through October 15. And as our amazing LIA student mentioned, there are many celebrations throughout the district and many of our schools. Our students are also encouraged to participate in the state essay and art contests, and we do have some students already, they have submitted their essays highlighting the Hispanic contributions in the state of Florida. We will also be celebrating on October 4. We will be at the Lake Mary Farmers Market from 11 to 1. The community is invited, and so are our board members, our superintendent. We will have music celebrating from different Spanish countries, and we will also have activities planned for the little ones by our LIA students. We also have our LIA Leaders in Action Youth Summit that will be on October 29 from 8:30 to 12 o'clock at the Lake Mary Event Center. Now, I always like to do a little snapshot of our district. This is where we are. This is, these are our top five countries and top five languages. Right now, we represent 132 different countries in our district and 129 different languages, which is really amazing. I want to highlight India, their language, a dialect. One of their dialects is Telugu in one of the regions in India, and I want to highlight them because I was able to attend their graduation at the Tamile School of Central Florida a couple of weeks ago. And what an experience for me to be there. I learned so much about their culture too and their language. And to those students that we see of the picture there on the left, 95% of them attend our schools. It was from kindergarten to 12, and most, all, all of them speak three or four different languages. So it was really a highlight for me to really learn a little bit more of our culture that we have in Seminole County. This is a snapshot from Focus on Achievement of the ESOL Program. As of today, we have exited over 667 students that have met the exiting criteria by the state. That means that our, these students have passed the Access Data Assessment by a Level 4 language proficiency level, and also passed FAS with a Level 3 proficiency level, three or higher. We have screened over 1,500 youth students for the ESOL Program, and we're still screening this week. We're not done. And right now, we're actively serving, those are the LY code for 3,665 students. And the students that we exit, we also have to continue monitoring them for two years. So we have 1,224 students. To the left, we have an infographic, which is, really spells out student achievement, all the hard work that our ESOL teachers did last year. Shout out to every one of them. If they're listening to me right now, they know that I'm very proud of them, and all classroom teachers, because it takes a village, right, to make this happen. And we really did, very proud of the middle school, elementary, middle, and high school ELA achievements, and we also have the learning gains, just really great work. And all of that also aligns with our 2025 Access for ELSE State Assessment. In Seminole County, we had 31% of our English language learners achieved language proficiency. The state average was 15%. That was just amazing work. And as you can see on the chart, all the, by grade level, very proud of that. We also highlighted second grade, because we're all about using the continuous improvement model, because I know we still have a lot of work to do. We still have the others that did not meet that criteria, right? So we're helping and working, and we already have an action plan this year to support our current third graders. But still, just great work, great achievement on behalf of the ESOL teachers and the ESOL program. So at this time, we're going to start with, how do we support those newcomers coming into our district? So I'm going to have Mrs. Brewster talk about that.
Good evening. Every summer, we offer a newcomers program to our families that
to our families that recently arrived to the United States. This past year, we were able to do a parent class where we use Reading Horizons to incorporate the language that they're using in the school to use in the house. The parents were able to take home a tablet, and they got trained on how to use the program during the summer program. We focus on the language development through engaging lessons and projects with thinking language acquisition through content areas. So we monitor their learning through the sciences, maths, and the social studies. We took them to a field trip to the Orlando Science Center for all the learning that they did in the classroom. As you can see here, we did small group interventions with math, science, and literature. And then they were able to apply what they learned at the Orlando Science Center. All of this monitoring their learning throughout the summer program and as they enter the new school year. In Seminole County, we have two ESOL Program models. The elementary level, our teachers push into the classroom, and this is a mainstream inclusion model. The teachers are ESOL endorsed or certified, and they push in primarily during ELA block with a focus on the Florida best standards. But we integrate the English language development standards using the SEPS instructional priorities. During this time, the students are engaging with content level, with grade-level content. But we are focusing on listening, speaking, reading, and writing, and making sure that they are comprehending in all these aspects. Now, we will have our two teachers describe the secondary level Sheltered English.
Abby Mary, so that we can... ...the Thursday or the Sunday?
Period, they are working on programs such as Achieve 3000, Khan Academy, and Quill with the second ESOL teacher. During that same class period, newcomers may be pulled out as needed by our third ESOL teacher. This model is useful, as it allows students to work directly on skill-based lessons and test-taking strategies. Something else that we do to improve students' listening skills is a weekly listening activity. And they listen to a recording and answer the questions based on their understanding. So that helps develop their listening domain of language. Furthermore, we use a resource called the Finish Line Book, and we create practices to help prepare the students for the WIDA Access Test that they have to take yearly to measure their language proficiency. And so they can practice their listening, speaking, and reading and writing. We prepare for graduation requirement tests, such as the SAT, the ACT, the CLT, and the FAST tests to help the students graduate. We incorporate practices through bell ringers and different games. We focus on the process, not just the results, so that the students are able to gain meaningful experiences to benefit them. Not just the correct answers that we're looking for. We're looking for them to be able to explain the process that they used in order to get the answer. And it's, you know, like Lake Brantley, our students have to be goal-oriented. So they have to understand that data that they have. It helps them stay motivated to reach their next learning goal. From the beginning of the school year, students are asked to use Skyward to help to look up their test scores. It empowers them to see where they stand, what more, how many more points they need in order to meet their next learning goal. So we help our students from as early as ninth grade. It teaches them to work, to advocate for themselves so that they can reach their achievement goals. In sum, we think that collaboration between the teachers, the parent support, resources, and test prep are really things that make us stand out and get that 100% graduation rate every year. Thank you for having us.
In addition to these models, we have the ESOL Ongoing Professional Development. Our students are required to take the WIDA Access every year, which is a progress monitoring on their language acquisition in addition to the state FAST testing. In our monthly meetings, we focus on benchmark instruction using the SEPS Framework and the Pacing Guide. We utilize the formal and informal assessments to monitor student learning. But within this, we also have to focus on listening, speaking, reading, and writing, and not just in the ELA side, but we need to integrate in the content areas of mathematics, science, social studies, because they will be asked questions for the language of all of these subjects. They collaborate with each other to build effective conditions for learning. We want to make sure that our students are engaged and working on grade-level content with the materials that their peers are working on. But again, we're not just focusing on the right answer. It's the justification process to get there. We implement station rotations to support instruction and engagement. And during our PLCs, we're modeling different strategies where the students are up and moving and engaged, not just sitting down and working behind a screen. And as I mentioned earlier, the integration of language and content, only because they won't only be having to take a test on ELA, they'll need to know the language for math, science, social studies, and also the social aspect of it all. We do have nine dual-language schools that you can see here. And these schools use, in the ELA side, maravillas, which is the reading portion of their curriculum. And then they're also doing Spanish and English in the science and in mathematics. Our schools that are doing the dual-language program, we have seen great success in their scores. Another support that we provide is translation support and services. Our students get the accommodation where they can have a dictionary in their native language, and we start using it from the beginning of the school year. The teachers are able to request a dictionary for each child in their native language, word-to-word dictionary in English. In addition to that, we have iPads, Chromebooks, ThinkPads, and laptops that assist in bridging the native language to English. Our students who are coming from another country, they might have a transcript that needs to be translated. And we also have a service where our registers are able to submit these documents so the students are placed appropriately. We place them by age, but we also see what they did in their country as well.
Board members, and Superintendent Beaming, as you heard from our amazing educators here, it takes a village. It's so much behind the scenes that we do to help our students to be academically and linguistically successful. If the students have and they master the language, they will be successful in the content. It's all mixed in. We still have to continue working with that language proficiency. So I would like to conclude with a short, just little clip from Eastbrook Elementary. Felix Arroyo is teaching math to his kindergarten class.
...matemática, y uno lo que vamos a hacer es vamos a repasar las figuras geométricas, okay? Así que la primera figura que tenemos es círculo.
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 Cero lados.
Cero lados.
Cero lados, you mean.
Cero lados.
Ciro.
Cero lados.
Ciro, that's muy bien. Triángulo.
Triángulo.
Tres lados.
Tres lados.
Tres lados.
Tres lados.
Rectángulo.
Rectángulo.
Dos lados grandes.
Dos lados grandes.
Dos lados pequeños.
Dos lados pequeños.
Just a short clip. It really starts from kindergarten, helping our little ones master the language, language proficiency, so they could be academically successful and graduate from Seminole County Public Schools. Thank you so much. That's all we have.
That's fabulous, fabulous, fabulous. So I've been in that classroom, I remember. And he has not only just such a gift, but a huge classroom library section in both Spanish and English. So, well done, well done presentation. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Member Sanchez?
Wow. I can't say enough about you all. From your meetings to your family get-togethers, a family within a family, and how you all celebrate successes together and learn to, you know, beg, borrow, and share ideas. That's what it's all about. And you guys are the example of what it's all about. And all of our ESOL teachers and everything that you all do, we can't thank you enough. And the students, they, I mean, I got a call a couple days ago from a student that Dr. Tom Condo helped, as well as Dr. Cody, on a situation, and twin girls from Lake Brantley. And they were just so excited that we were able to help them with something. I haven't had a chance to talk to you about it many yet, but you'll be touched. And it's just collaborating, working together. Can't wait to celebrate all the wonderful Hispanic Heritage Festivals, festivities this month with you. And be there by your side always. So, thank you.
Vice Chair.
I just want to say thank you. This was really nice to get some more details about the work that you do daily in the classroom. I so appreciate Ms. Cardona, you inviting us into the kickoffs with all of the ESOL teachers at the beginning of the year. It was great to see some of that information. Again, I thought I had some data memorized, and I didn't have it right, so I'm so glad to see it here. I know I've got the flyer at home that I refer to often. Also, I wanted to, I know we've got the Hispanic Heritage Festival this Friday, your school. But correct me if I'm wrong, that's, it started as Justice Hispanic Heritage, but isn't that also where they work with all of the clubs?
What we want to do at Lake Brantley High School, and this is following Mr. Rice's initiative on, you know, collaboration and coming together. This is the fifth year that Lake Brantley's celebrating the, creating Latinos in Action are creating the festival. And we started by collaborating with SGA. And she walked me through, Dr. Groil walked me through the processes of how she did her events. And I took it from there and built a beautiful, the first year that I completed, that we had the festival, I said something, I cried so much. I cried, I couldn't stop crying. And I said, "God, I'm ready to go. If I go today, I did something that I never thought I was going to see." And that was unifying our school in two 30-minute sections together. Seeing everybody, it didn't matter where you came from, just seeing everybody as one student body, celebrating the culture, but together, dancing, singing, smiling. Everybody forgot what problems, what tribulations, what limitations. It was just magical. I couldn't stop crying. Ms. Lopez shook me, and she goes, "You gotta stop this. This is your event." So I said, "If I die now, I did something that I feel many dream of doing." So we've taken it up a notch every year. And what we have done is, we invite every club, everyone. Students even can sign up, you know, with the permission of a teacher or the principal. And it has become like, what everybody calls it, their favorite festival. So I am proud that my Latinos in Action class is behind it, but I am more proud to see how our school comes together. And the support that I get from everybody, Ms. Cardona has never missed it. If she, like, the kids are like, "Is she coming?" And I said, "Yeah, she is. She has to come." And I said, "Of course." So when you guys show up, they just feel the support. It's not easy. It's not easy for them to be in a different country and have to meet all the challenges of education, and that really sets their, the, the roots in here. They feel like they belong. So thank you, and we wait for all of you there, if you can.
Well, it is, it is an uplifting event every year, and I, I, I was, um, new on the board, and it was one of my first events that I was invited to by a student, so it was very meaningful, and of course, we're all put on our, uh, dancing shoes and wear our shirts that you so graciously, I, I've still got mine from last year if we need it.
Have a new one coming in, yes.
Out of Lake Mary, so that's always lovely. Um, I did have a couple of quick questions. You had mentioned the devices in the classroom, um, are those one-on-one right now for the, for the Google Translate for the high schools?
Um, so it's the devices that they have in their classroom, but Mrs. Cardona also has another device?
Yes, um, well, with, uh, the requests are made, those are the, the schools that I, and I know where the newcomers are at, so I, this year, we are, we will be purchasing another small little device called Pocket Talk.
Oh, wow.
Um, that, um, is smaller than, we're still going to use the Language Live devices that we have, but this one is, um, cost-effective, and it's going to really help reach out to more students, especially our newcomers. Our teachers will be able to use it, it's so easy to use, they just press the button, ask questions or anything, and the student will go to their native language or vice versa too, so.
Very good. And Ms. Abagash, I haven't been out to, um, Lake Howell to, to visit your classes, uh, but I would love to, please make sure that you keep us, keep us in mind for special events.
Always welcome.
Thank you so much. And last but not least, so you, uh, this year, you're serving 36, 65 students throughout the county, so about 6% or so of our students?
Yes, and it's still growing, we're not done testing yet.
Okay. And what were last year's final numbers, do you know?
Yes, last year, we were at over 4,000 active help lives in Seminole County.
And those, is it the, the, they, the students will continually be served by ESOL even though they graduate from ELL, or do I have it backwards?
Now, when they exit the program, they are placed with regular ELA teachers and mainstream in the regular classes like they have always been, um, but still, our LF students get still a little support, if they request for a dictionary or extended time now for the testing, the state assessment, they're allowed to have that too.
Okay, so those are the students that are still actively in the program that need the additional services?
Yep, but our LF students, very few, I want to say only about two requested for that additional support last year.
Very good. Well, thank you all, thank you, um, for all of the details. I look forward to being at Lake Howell as well as the other schools.
Thank you. Member Dillinger.
Yes, well, I just want to say, first of all, hearing what you just said, I think that's incredible. Your heart is huge, and thank you for that, for our kids. Um, but I did want to ask about, if you could just briefly explain to somebody what shelter instruction means as opposed to an inclusion type of model?
That's a good question, thank you, Dr. Dillinger. So, um, inclusion model, our students are push-in, right, with our, um, ESOL teachers. Shelter instruction, our two amazing teachers here are the ELA teachers. They are the, they are certified or endorsed, they are the experts with ESOL strategies. They follow the same framework as all the regular students, none of that changes. The only thing they add now are the strategies and they scaffold the material, the, the, uh, uh, the lessons based on the language proficiency level that the students have. So in addition to the content, they're also teaching the language, the formal means of the language.
So it'd be more for students that are less proficient, that are earlier in their language acquisition, right? Okay, that's, I just want to make sure I have that right.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
And it's been really highly effective, uh, we have the data to show that it works.
I, um, have some history with that, so, thank you. And as always, you just go way above and beyond in everything that you do, and thank you.
Thank you. Member Davis, any questions?
I have no questions. I just wanted to thank you guys. I see you, um, interact with your students and families, and it's just amazing. I mean, they, they just love you guys. I don't know why. I do know why. So, just thank you, and thank you for relating to, to the students, um, and especially their families. I think they all feel welcome, um, and they're all learning together with their student, which makes a huge difference. Thank you.
And I echo all of the sentiments. Um, Minnie, you have built a team of rock stars at every school, at every level. I know, I know, they're boots on the ground, and we see it and feel it, and we're just so appreciative, um, for the work that you do and the relationships that, that you build very much. Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Okay, Vice Chair, if you could read the, we're up to public comment, agenda items, if you could read this statement, please.
Very good. The purpose of the public participation segments of the board meeting is to allow the public to address matters within the board's jurisdiction and not to resolve individual grievances or disputes. Public comments related to education, the board agenda, and the district are welcome and encouraged, but public comment segments are not forums to engage in personal attacks against schools, skis, school system employees or board members. To maintain orderly conduct, the public comment segments of the meeting may not be used as open forums to discuss matters unrelated to education, to support or oppose candidates for public office, including presentation of political and/or campaign issues, announcing candidacy and/or campaigning, or to engage in commercial speech attempting to sell a product or service to the board or the public. Nor are they forums to address matters involving disciplinary actions of any kind, pending claims, complaints, or litigation against the district or district personnel. Public comment segmentations are as follows. Agenda items, limited to three minutes. One group representative speaking on a proposition, maximum of six minutes. Speaker must remain on topic for agenda item proposition. Non-agenda items, limited to two minutes. Speaker shall direct their comments only to the board and may not address the audience or other speakers. No speaker may yield his or her time to any other person. Generally, substitutions of speakers will not be allowed.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Our first speaker, James Evans, followed by Jessica Tillman, followed by Raquel Molina. Good evening, if you'll come up to the podium.
Good evening, board members, Madam Chair, thank you for having me this evening. Um, very quickly, before I get into my main topic, I do, I was reading through the consent agenda, and I thought the new breastfeeding policy that's on tonight's agenda was a phenomenal rework, actually. Uh, it's got way more policy initiatives in it, and it's, I think, just a more full and comprehensive policy, so, well done, staff. Um, what I really want to talk about tonight was the SEA bargaining agreement that is on, uh, tonight's consent agenda. And while I assume, uh, because it's in the consent, SCPS is prepared to accept it, um, and I have no issue with that as a citizen, I think it's at least worth something to address, how I personally see it as a constituent. Since 2016, in, in inflation-adjusted dollars, teachers have lost money in their salary. Since 2016, they are down 12% in inflation-adjusted dollars. And unfortunately, this contract negotiation doesn't actually make them better. The highly effective, while it is an increase in the 2.3%, that is still six tenths below in CPI from last year, meaning they still have an inflation-adjusted reduction in pay. In Seminole County, we are one of the best districts in the state, and yet our teachers are being left behind financially. We see this under Florida Department of Education statistics. Seminole's average teacher does make less than the state average, and yet our teachers are, as the data shows, phenomenally good at what they do in education. And so with that, I think it provides a very striking dichotomy. We have one of the strongest districts in the Sunshine State, and yet some of the most average-paid teachers. And as we look into the next school year, I do hope our board will look at some policy initiatives, that maybe we can bring Seminole County teachers more to what they actually show their worth is within Seminole County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jessica Tillman, followed by Raquel Molina, followed by Nina Sandberg. Good evening.
Good evening, board. Uh, my name is Jessica Tillman, um, I am a Longwood resident. Um, I wasn't going to speak tonight, but walking into the building, I had to go through metal detectors. Um, I'm not really sure what prompted that, um, but it's discouraging when Lake Brantley High School, I believe it was last year, was having a lot of fighting issues, and parents were scared to send their kids to school, and parents were requesting metal detectors in their school, and nothing was done. So it appears that you care about your safety, but not the safety of the students. So I just wanted to highlight that. Um, I'm, I'm not sure if it was the Charlie Kirk situation that prompted this, um, but I do know that there are students all over the district that are concerned about that situation. Um, there is a memorial for him on Sunday, I will be attending that. Um, and there are several requests to put Turning Point USA chapters in Seminole County, so I look forward to seeing that. Um, I also wanted to speak about the public participation in, um, meetings policy. Um, it seems like you're trying to silence people, we're no longer allowed to use any kind of props or pictures or anything, that's a little concerning for me as well. And some of the language, you're also silencing parents and constituents, so I'm a little disappointed in that policy. Um, I am excited that you guys did remove the safe harbor policy, so I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Raquel Molina, followed by Nina. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Raquel Molina, a Seminole County resident for over 25 years. As much as I dislike speaking at school board meetings due to my anxiety disorder, it is my duty as a concerned parent, and it is my First Amendment right to continue sharing all the serious issues occurring in SCPS, ESE department. SCPS Policy 2460 outlines the school board's commitment to providing free, appropriate public education for students with disabilities in accordance with state and federal laws. Is SCPS enforcing the law? Nope, it hasn't been enforcing the law for many years now. Is SCPS still retaliating against teachers and parents for advocating for their students and, and/or kiddos? Yes, the retaliation culture is still ongoing, and it's just getting worse. Do I believe that the school board members prefer to ignore the issues instead of enforcing the special education and retaliation laws? Yes, they are only focused on one, on pushing one agenda and nothing else. Have I watched board members worship Ms. Beaman and others in leadership while forgetting who they are supposed to serve? Many times, and it is very depressing and frustrating to see current board members pretending to care about all students. SCPS has also failed to provide prior written notice, PWN, to parents before making changes or denying related services in IP meetings. IDEA mandates a PWN before a school can initiate or change a child's placement or add or remove related services, et cetera. SCPS cannot be trusted anymore. All parents with children in the ESE department should always request a PWN in their IP meetings. PWN creates a documented paper trail of changes or denials to their children's special education services, which is very important for accountability and potential disputes. SCPS only, once again, I, SCPS, once again, I kindly ask, please do better and retaliation culture and follow your mission statement. I'm still begging, and will continue begging for improvement in our once, once a rated school district. Unfortunately, it's no longer a rated. SCPS should change their human resources department to human retaliation department, since you guys are so good at retaliating against good people. Human retaliation. Thank you.
Thank you, Raquel. Nina Sandberg.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Nina Sandberg. You have a policy regarding exceptional student education and a policy regarding student parental rights on your agenda. You don't give us specifics about what new policies you are adopting. However, there is a negative history where employees of SCPS have deliberately and intentionally denied exceptional education students their civil rights, their basic rights, and their right to a free, appropriate public school education. You should not be adopting any policy that erodes the rights of students with disabilities any further. You do not need a, you do not need a DEI committee. What you need is a properly functioning civil rights office and a properly functioning compliance office. SCPS needs to adopt policies that respect and protect the civil rights of all students, employees and parents. All students, employees and parents have the right to file legitimate grievances, uh, and legitimate complaints about school-related problems. They have the right to be treated respectfully and with concern and consideration in response to their grievances instead of retaliation. SCPS should not allow its employees to retaliate against any student, parent, or employee who filed a legitimate grievance. Any employee who retaliates should receive disciplinary action that is proportionate to the retaliation. These disciplinary actions should include verbal warnings, written warnings, counseling statements, suspensions, and terminations. Yes, there are times when it is appropriate to fire the employee who performed the retaliation. SCPS needs to strive to give parents and students better customer service. SCPS needs to be a safe place for students, their parents, and also for the employees. Last April and May, there was a situation where a teacher was retaliated against by her boss because she agreed that a student with disabilities did not receive adequate services from the school. Last year, SCPS took malicious legal action against a young child in order to try to prevent the child from receiving necessary medical accommodations at school. All of the malicious games need to stop. No one in the disability community needs these malicious games. SCPS will not be an A-plus rated school district until it provides A-plus rated education and childcare services to its own students with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment for agenda items. It's now time for board items for discussion. These are non-committee. I'll start with, um, Member Sanchez.
Um, I'm not going to do my board comments for, uh, my general statement this time. I'm actually, I chose to read something, um, instead, if that's okay, Chair? We need to remember that words have tremendous power. They can bring people together, or they can tear them apart. When we introduce kindness in our conversations, we allow for differences of opinions. We may not agree with what the other person says, and that's okay. A healthy disagreement can become catalyst for thoughts and ideas of the highest degree. When we speak with empathy and compassion, we build trust and provide a secure environment for candid discussion. We may strengthen our bonds with people, advance understanding, and create enduring relationships by carefully examining our words and their effects. For most people, non-hostility is contagious. When we set kindness as a standard for our conversations, we encourage others to do the same, at least it is for us. I've seen several people who may sometimes be reckless and may not be nice or kind to me, but simply because I give them an equal amount of respect as everyone else, it's fascinating because they then start talking nice to me. Let's lead by example for each other, and especially for our precious children. Remember, treat others with respect. We can agree to disagree, and we can do this together. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Member Sanchez. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Um, board members, like many of you, I spent a long time this weekend, uh, going through our board books and our, and our, um, budget, and, uh, my ma, my mind began to wander to the, uh, to the many opportunities that we have for our students, um, to our school visits. to our school visits over the past few weeks, which have been joyful. We celebrated Spark winners. We got to watch children create art. And then many of us went to the PTA dividend and community outreach meetings. And I was touched by the wide variety, the great medley of humans that we have that come together to form a community and work toward a common goal of learning and growing and making sure that each student has an individualized pathway to success. By the time I got to the end of the book, I was incredibly inspired on seeing that we have a group from Winter Springs High School for students studying ASL to take a trip to Gallaudet University, which is the school for deaf. This is such a remarkable opportunity and just shows the rich differences that we have and how important it is to embrace our individual cultures. I have to say, my mind wandered. I was not able to go through the whole book all at once. And it's a curious time to be an elected official. Last week was marked by violence and division at the national level, and I've had folks reaching out to me, as I'm sure all of you have. And in trying to make meaning of the work we do and focusing on our students, I went to my bookshelf and I was reminded last week by someone who had never been to my house before that I have a whole lot of children's books for someone whose children are grown, but that is truly where I often find solace. So I found a collection by Shel Silverstein that, to me, I found meaning, and so I just wanted to share with you. "No Difference." Small as a peanut, big as a giant, we're all the same size when we turn off the light. Rich as a sultan, poor as a mite, we're all worth the same when we turn off the light. Red, black, or orange, yellow, or white, we all look the same when we turn off the light. So maybe the way to make everything right is just for someone to reach out and turn off the light. And so I just want to remind us all in this room and beyond that we truly have much more in common and are much more the same than we are different. It's an honor to do this work.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair. Member Dollinger.
Yes. So first, I'd just like to offer my congratulations to Lake Mary Elementary School on the celebration of its 100th year anniversary. It was amazing to see families there that have three generations of children attending that school and some teachers that have like, I don't know, 40 years of teaching in one school. That's pretty incredible. What started as a two-room schoolhouse built for $400 will debut in 2027 after a $35 million renovation. I can't wait to see it. And thanks to the City of Lake Mary for partnering with the school and district throughout the celebration and ongoing renovation, and also congratulations to Principal Little for her outstanding leadership, her collaboration with Team Ops and with the city. She really has demonstrated outstanding leadership. Like Ms. Garrick said, in the last month, various board members at various times show up at various schools, attending dividend orientations and PTA orientations. And I'd first like to just mention Karen Hendricks, who has done an incredible job. Her stamina is amazing. She's got to be going to 60-something schools. And every time you see her presentation, it's like it's the first time she's given it. I don't know how she does it. It's truly wonderful, though, like Ms. Garrick said, to see at every school the unique culture and climate in the school and the parents that contribute to that and their dedication and passion to the schools, and I think it is remarkable. And so when we talk about parent engagement, we have a tremendous amount of parents who are willing to give countless hours of their time, their talents, their treasures. Just the other night, I met the ladies at Indian Trail, no, Tuscaloosa Middle School, who are pretty much, you know, the media specialists there, doing incredible work. And they are very organized and willing to give of their time for the benefit of the students without any thought of what they get back, except the pleasure of doing what they do. So I'd just like to thank them and also the folks that do that. And also a special thanks to Karen for the great job she's done in her inaugural year doing this work. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Member Davis.
I don't have anything new to talk about right now. The theme that has been consistent with Seminole County is this idea of kindness and caring for one another. And I just wanted to remind everyone, not only is it necessary that we all demonstrate kindness, but I want you all to start thinking about recognizing our students when you see something kind. I want to call it catching kindness. And if you see someone behave in a certain way that's thoughtful of another person, sometimes it's important that we recognize that right away and we say it. Because the more they understand how much it means to someone just to say hi or just to ask how you are, the more they want to do it. And the more that they feel good when someone cares about them. So if we can recognize the students or the teachers or even our administrators who will show an act of kindness, I think that'll go a long way as well.
Thank you so much. The past few weeks, we've gone with our community involvement, like everyone has said. It is very uplifting to see the numbers of parents and grandparents that want to help in our schools. They're offering their hands and time, and we're just so grateful. If you're curious about ways that you can be involved, it doesn't mean you have to show up every day or every week, but there might be one project that you like. There's gardening, there's healthy hands, there's reading rap program. Yeah, there's so many opportunities. Please look on our website, the community involvement page. Sign up to be a dividend, and that's step one. We all attended a huge drop-off of donations since our last board meeting at Tools for Schools that the Seminole County government, all of our public libraries collected donations, and it was one of the largest donations that we've received. So thank you all for being there to support them. In addition, Representative Smith was there, who produced a check for the benefit of Tools for Schools. So we had a photo up with him. I personally also attended the first meeting of our Strategic Planning Steering Committee. We are compiling all of your input, teachers, parents, staff members, even board members. They want to hear from us as well. There are going to be many more meetings, but it was interesting first glance at what a portrait of a graduate looks like. So stay tuned, everybody, and thank you for contributing. I think they said 2,700 respondents, so that was a pretty good turnout. We also attended the Seminole, many of us attended the Seminole County Chamber Luncheon, which was the legislative delegation update. And basically, the message was buckle up for this year. So I'll leave you with that part of it. And I too wanted just a brief comment about the past few weeks, months. It's been very difficult. We see it in our communities. We hear it and see it on social media. I know people are struggling, and there have been horrific events that occurred the past few months. But violence is never the answer. We shouldn't respond in violence. We hope you'll consider how fragile our nation is, and our children are watching us, and we're setting examples for them to follow. I'd ask you to be patient and understanding with each other. Offer grace wherever you can. I feel like we're better than this, so thank you. Okay, now we're moving on. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation on the consent agenda?
Yes, I do, Chair, and I believe that there are two opportunities for appointment on the consent agenda.
Okay. I missed that. I apologize. Is there anyone that wants to serve? One is Firewall.
One is the RFP for E-Rate Consulting.
Does anyone want to serve on that? Member Dollinger, thank you. And the other is the Firewall?
Correct.
And I offered to do that one. I think you have a couple going on right now.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so consent agenda.
My recommendation is that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Member Sanchez, is there a second?
Second.
Member Dollinger, thank you. Is there any discussion, board members? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. No items removed. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation on student discipline?
Yes, I do, that the School Board of Seminole County approve the student disciplinary recommendations from August 25, 2025.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice Chair. A second. Member Davis, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We have no unfinished business under, Jill, I feel like this should go under new business, but the superintendent, it's time for the superintendent's annual evaluation. Okay, understood. Okay, so I have a little, I wrote up a little thing based on our input. So Superintendent's Annual Evaluation for 2024-2025, in accordance with the terms of Ms. Beaman's contract with Seminole County Public Schools, she is to be evaluated by each school board member annually to be completed no later than October 1st. This evaluation includes five professional practices, which is rated on a scale of 1, unsatisfactory; 2, need improvement; 3, effective; and 4, highly effective. Additionally, each board member has the opportunity to provide written comments related to each standard. And the standards that we've rated are as follows. Number 1 is vision and culture. 2 is business operations. 3 is board governance and policy. 4, communication and community relations. And 5 is ethical leadership. The following is a summary of Superintendent Beaman's 2024-2025 summary. Standard 1, vision and culture. She received a 3.97. Standard 2, operations, resources, and personnel management, excuse me. She received a 4. Standard 3, board governance and policy. She received a 4. Communication and community. She received a score of 3.89. And ethical leadership. She received a score of 4. Superintendent Beaman's overall performance rating is 3.97, which is highly effective. Per Ms. Beaman's contract, her employment is extended through June 30, 2029. Congratulations and thank you for representing us well.
Thank you, Chair.
Did you have any other comments regarding that? No?
Well, my report is in the book, but I have a couple of items, and I'm waiting, nope, not yet time. I have a couple of items that I did want to share. We have an invito high school teacher, Ms. Brinkman, who was recently named as the Seminole County Farm Bureau's 2025 Agricultural Educator of the Year. So looking forward to bringing her to a meeting to celebrate that accomplishment. And just last week, our very own Dr. Nicola Williams was recognized by the Florida School Counselor Association as the District Leader of the Year for the State of Florida. And this recognition was awarded to Dr. Williams as a result of her unwavering commitment to support Seminole County school counselors in providing targeted and meaningful services to our students and our families throughout this district. So she will be formally recognized at the statewide conference in November, and then I look forward to us celebrating her accomplishments as well. And there is a little bit of an announcement that will happen for Seminole High School, but I can't announce it yet. But look forward to a nice celebration for Seminole High School coming up that we will then be able to celebrate. So that is all, there's so many great things happening throughout the district and so many of our team members that are being celebrated, not just by our students, our administrators, but by other entities that recognize the hard work that is happening in our school. So just wanted to share that.
Thank you so much. Very uplifting. Okay, it's now time for board comments with your committee update reports.
All right, so, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. You can hear me, right? The green light's on. First, I wanted to let you know that for FSBA, the legislative committee that I'm on, quite a few committees, I'm not sure if you all know that legislation starts earlier. Sessions start earlier this year because it's an election year, so we have to have everything in and start processing everything a lot earlier. And so we're doing a deep dive right now on looking at all the different ideas from different districts, in the 67 districts. I do want to mention to you that I'm working with school boards from all over this county, not of this county, from all over the state. There is nothing like what we have here. The turmoil, the fighting, the bickering, it is unbelievable. So I just want everyone to know that we are really blessed here, and it is because we have such great leadership. And that goes for our teachers, to our administrators, to our transportation department, to all the leaders there, to Superintendent, everybody that's here. It takes a village. It takes our wonderful parents. It takes all of us together. So thank you to you all. Also, I wanted you to know Zoo, the board I sit on for Central Florida Zoo, we are doing Hispanic Heritage Month, of course, this month. Next week, September 26, on Friday night, that will be a night for Hispanic Heritage Month from 5 to 8. Asian Lantern tickets are going on sale, and it's from November 18 to January 18. If you don't get them early, then you don't get the date you want. So it's really, really important, and you know, if you don't get them, they do sell out. So go online and purchase your Asian Lantern tickets. PJ, one of our Rhinos is leaving, so they're having a little celebration for him. So if you want to stop by and say goodbye to him before he heads to his next destination, that would be great. He's really, really friendly. And we have the Zoo Boo Bash coming up and Kids Night Out. There's so many activities for you to drop your children off to and be a part of or have activities there that you want to be, you know, for them to teach our students. So there's so many different opportunities, so please take advantage of it. And Seminole Health Advisory Council, I went to that meeting last week. They talked a little bit about different things that are going on in our community, from, you know, housing developments for our kids' house to Oxford House, different facilities for our students and adults. I also wanted to mention that on Ally's Hope, which is one of the boards that I sit on with this week, we are doing a ribbon-cutting ceremony for our third school. I'd like to thank Amy Elwood and Mike Rice for helping us with this initiative to continue building with our mental wellness programs. to continue building with our mental wellness programs with our extra support with the programs that we already have in place, but the more, the better, right? So, we're having a Lyman Hub, and we've already put in about $140,000 worth of extra support into the school. So, we will do a ribbon cutting ceremony there. And this Mental Wellness Resource Room will be wonderful addition to that school campus, and that's called the Hope Hub. And then, we have had, I had that, we went to the Calno Meeting, which is our Council of Local Government of Seminole County, learning about Sanford was the one that we went to with at Decision Tactical last week, was it, Robyn?
Yeah.
And a lot of growth going on in Sanford. It's really, really neat to see what's happening there. And I also didn't want to forget, because I didn't have too many other board things that I have to go to besides a base camp, which is American Cancer Society for Pediatric Cancer, which is a local unit that we raise funds for our children and their families here locally. That event is October 11th, and anybody that wants to get tickets for that, it would be great, or help and volunteer, I think I mentioned that last time, is a great organization to help our children and their families with children that are battling pediatric cancer. And then, the last one, Dr. Dallinger and I had the opportunity to go in one of my favorite places, the Environmental Center for Environmental Studies, for our Mud Walk. I spoke about it since, you know, I taught 5th grade for so many years, and it's my favorite trip. But part of the, you know, penny sales tax initiative is the renovating of the parks, and they did a phenomenal job. And it's open to the public, not the Environmental Center that we use for our students, but the park itself and all ADA compliant, it is amazing. You need to take your children there, go on a bike path down there, see all the beautiful trees, take a walk down Lake Jessup, but they did a phenomenal job with Spring Hammock and Environmental Center. So, and then also, we did take a picture with Senator Davis, Senator Davis, Senator Dave Smith last week, and then yesterday, we took one with Senator Broder as well. So, they have also helped us with tools for our schools, and we appreciate the support from the legislators on helping us with initiatives. And of course, we will continue working with them. And like I said, you know, working together makes the world better. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
Earlier this afternoon, we had the update from Executive Director Jean Van Smith and the Chair Holton Mills of the foundation. So, we've all got an in-depth look of the current mission and where the foundation is. Thank you for sharing the information early about them as well, Chair Kraus. So, that was my report for the, for the foundation. I also attended the Sanford District 2 meeting at the Belma Williams Center, which is an opportunity for community leaders to come together. Commissioner Wiggins always assembles all of the heads of the city of Sanford Departments of Parks and Rec, Fire Department, Police Chief, a real wealth of information. I'm able to give a report about the schools. Also, our individual principals often join and give their own individual report, so it's always informative. I did want to remind folks, and this is true in Sanford and in all of our municipalities, is that the Fire Department will inspect and replace fire alarms free of charge. So, as long as the supplies last, they're welcome, they are happy to do that. So, please, if it's been a while, if your fire alarm looks a little yellow, or some, or you've been at a time where, you know, it's been blinking off at night and you've heard it go, and you know, it might be time to make sure and put safety first, so please be sure and call your, your local fire department. I was out of town, so did not get to attend the Midway Coalition Meeting, but I did talk with the Executive Director, Mr. Green, and wanted to make sure that we all knew that the Park and Watch Air Show will continue again. I believe this is the fourth year at Millennium Middle School. That's October 25 and 26. It is in conjunction with the, with the airport's AirDOT show. So, the tickets are available to watch the main show at the airport, but for families that want to, with permission from the airport, they're allowed to park in the Millennium Middle School parking lot. I believe it's $25 per carload. And all of that money is a fundraiser that goes back to the Midway Coalition, which feeds into, helps out the Midway Safe Harbor Center and other local efforts. But additionally, Mr. Green splits those proceeds, so they go back to the, both Millennium Middle School and Midway Elementary School, and those funds go to the Principals Discretionary Fund. So, principals and schools are always appreciative of the flexibility in funds. I'm looking over at last year's Midway Elementary Principal, and I know that that was, that was always a big hit. And I believe that is it for my, for my committee reports. Oh, I did want to mention, I had said that the ASL students were going, from Winter Springs High School, were going to Washington DC. It is National Death Awareness Month, so I wanted to make sure that we, that we all were aware of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Dallinger.
Thank you, Chair. I met with the Business Advisory Board, I'm on that committee. We welcomed a new member, and the Chair and Vice Chair provided some feedback on their involvement in the strategic planning process. Our audit committee has not met since our last meeting, and I'm also attended the Central Florida Public School Board Coalition Meeting last week. And basically, that was the focus, the focus was on costs and challenges of building and renovating schools, the many statutory requirements, the new challenges of HB 180, and the continuing decline in capital funding for district public schools. So, it was really very interesting. We had some really great folks that were very knowledgeable, and Dr. Mullins participated in that too, and it was very interesting. I would like to take a moment to speak about American Founders Month. September has been designated by Florida statute as American Founders Month to celebrate and recognize the accomplishments of the founders of the United States. Florida schools are encouraged to recognize and observe this occasion through programs and celebrations and activities throughout the month, and probably you'll be invited to some. Constitution Day is celebrated tomorrow, September 17, with a focus on how the US Constitution and its amendments uphold the principles of checks and balances, consent of the governed, democracy, due process of law, federalism, individual rights, limited government, representative government, republicanism, the rule of law, and the separation of powers. In addition, Celebrate Freedom Week, which falls during the last full week of September, focuses on the Declaration of Independence. During the week, public school principals and teachers are required to conduct an oral recitation by students on a few sentences of the Declaration of Independence. In anticipation of Celebrate Freedom Week, I'd like to recite those words this evening. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. To secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just power from the consent of the governed." And if anyone would like their own personal copy of the Constitution, I have donated some copies that I acquired from the National Archives, and you can pick one up on your way out this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very nice. And thank you for our copies as well.
Our little history lesson for...
Member Davis.
I don't have anything to add at this time.
Okay. I have two quick committee updates. The Florida statute changed for the Value Adjustment Board, so we had to have another meeting to make sure that we were in compliance with the, with the legal changes. So, that makes three Value Adjustment Board meetings. Normally, they have one, maybe two during the calendar year, but... And then, Lake Howl High School hosted the first Seminole County Association of Student Government. And Mr. Rice, you were phenomenal. It was just a great morning. Their culinary team put out a breakfast that was to die for, and the students jumped right in with working as a team, and music brings everyone together. You were so right on that. So, he had some fabulous icebreakers. Look forward to future meetings, and other board members will get the opportunity to attend. It's, it's really good to hear from our most precious stakeholders. Okay, so those are my two updates. And let me find my agenda here. I think we are up to public comments, non-agenda items. And we have several of those. We'll start with Brian Cooperman and then Brad Cooperman. Good evening, how are you?
I am, my name is Brian Cooperman. I am one of the band directors at Hagerty High School, and I'm here to talk about the climate in our schools and how teachers are treated when we raise concerns. A little more than a year ago, the high school band directors of Seminole County met to discuss our growing exhaustion. We all knew that this job meant long days and late nights. We have football games, concerts, assessments, festivals, fundraising, hosting events, supporting our middle school feeders, and the list can go on. I came here tonight straight from marching rehearsal. There's four other directors that would like to come speak tonight who are not able to because they have rehearsal and open house. The workload is becoming unsustainable. We agreed that one event could be removed to help, Seminole County Marching Festival. Last year, we shared this with our district leaders, and the solution we were given was to learn to say no to events at our own school. But the band helps drive school spirit. Saying no to our school weakens relationships rather than strengthening them. This year, after many principals voiced support for us in not doing the festival for this season, we were told the festival was mandatory and a term of our employment. That is not in our contract. In fact, our contract explicitly says supplements are not considered terms of employment. When I raised these issues, I was accused of illegally trying to directly bargain simply for informing the board of the situation. I felt defeated, threatened, and intimidating for, intimidated for communicating my concerns directly to you all. As an annual contract teacher, I now fear for my job over refusing to do an unpaid Saturday event. I truly believe that we all have the same priorities, supporting our students, supporting the arts, supporting our teachers, and striving for excellence for our programs. I hope you all will come to more performances. This Friday, Hagerty will be joined by about 100 Lawton Childs and Jackson Heights students for a pre-game performance for our middle school night. There are dozens of opportunities to see your high school marching bands, including MPA, which will be hosted on October 25 at Hagerty High School. I urge you to hear us, respect us, and open a dialogue, because when teachers are supported, students and our schools will start to thrive more. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Cooperman, Cooperman, sorry, followed by Raquel Molina.
Good evening. I am Brad Cooperman, also from Hagerty High School. Similar to what my colleague just said, at the beginning of the school year, the high school band directors came together to talk honestly about the growing weight on our shoulders and our students. One of the most difficult topics was the Seminole County Marching Band Festival. This festival began as a community event started by a local Rotary Club, but when they stepped away, we, along with our parent volunteers, took it on ourselves. Since then, it's been fully planned, organized, and run by high school band directors and their parents on top of everything else we do. As you can see, I'm currently covered in paint from the things I was doing today. After much discussion, we came to a unanimous and heartfelt decision to take a break from the festival this year. Not because we don't value performance or tradition, but because we're just stretched too thin. The event is nearly identical to the marching MPA, which takes place just weeks later and already serves the same purpose for us and our students. So, when we were told the festival must continue despite our concerns, it was discouraging. But what's truly upsetting is that some of us were told failure to organize and host this event could put our jobs at risk. To be honest, that's devastating to hear. We pour our hearts into our program. We work nights, weekends, and summers, not for recognition, but because we care deeply about our students and want to give them something meaningful. But being told that our positions are in jeopardy for expressing that we need to take a break, it's disheartening, and frankly, it makes us feel replaceable. We understand the importance of community and visibility, but this festival has become a source of burnout, not celebration. And when the people responsible for running it are asking, really begging, for relief, it shouldn't be met with silence or threats. We're not asking for less work, we're asking to be heard, to be valued, and to be treated with the same respect that we give our students each and every day. I truly hope these words don't just stay in this room, but lead to real understanding and change. I appreciate your time. Thank you for letting us be here.
Thank you so much. Raquel Molina, followed by Nina Sandberg. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Raquel Molina. Free speech is protected at school board meetings under the First Amendment, but SEPS cannot restrict, restrict speech based on viewpoint or prohibit speech solely because it's offensive or does not agree with their agenda, or any rules must be applied equally to all speakers regardless, regardless of the school board's particular viewpoint. But these last few years, I've noticed our rights being infringed upon in SEPS. I have the utmost respect for people's strong faith in sharing their viewpoints, whether I agree or disagree, as long as that faith is not used as an excuse for violence. I can't believe Charlie Kirk was assassinated for his courage, that he had to stand up for what he believed in. He spoke facts and wisdom in a very professional way, and all he was doing was utilizing the power of free speech in a peaceful manner at the time of his assassination. Regardless of anyone's viewpoint, no one deserves to be murdered or retaliated for speaking truth. Free speech means protecting voices we agree or disagree with, not celebrating when they are silenced by violence. My condolences, my condolences to all his family and family, and let's make sure his bold legacy be kept alive forever. His life reminds us that one voice grounded in faith and courage really can make a difference. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. Nina Sandberg, followed by Elizabeth Randall. Good evening.
You all are allowed to mention his name. His name was Charlie Kirk. Charlie Kirk believed in the power of free speech and debate. He believed in the free exchange of ideas between people who disagree. Charlie Kirk was assassinated for having an opinion that a radicalized young man disagreed with. I'm aware that local parents have been cyber stalked after these meetings for having opinions such as we should not have XXX-rated pornography in our classrooms or our schools. I'm aware that one of the parents received threatening letters from out of state for giving the opinion that we shouldn't have XXX-rated pornography in our schools. So, I'm aware of these kinds of things. So, we have a problem even locally that we don't have people who want to respect the differences of opinion. Several years ago, my son was retaliated against the day after I complained at a school board meeting that there were no history or science textbooks in his classrooms. Literally, an employee retaliated against him the next day. So, it doesn't need to be a radical opinion, a political opinion, or a religious opinion. Someone thought that my 11-year-old child should be retaliated against this school just because I went to a school board meeting and said I, he needed history and science textbooks. So, that's a true story. We need to learn to disagree with civility, humanity, and basic human decency towards our fellow human beings. No one should be executed for voicing his opinion in this country. No one should be retaliated against. We need to return to celebrating and protecting and valuing free speech in this country. We are very lucky to have it. We need to value it. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Randall. Are you here? Jose Aslava. Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, you'll be next. So, hi, I'm Elizabeth, I'm Elizabeth Randall. I'm a retired Seminole County school teacher, and I am a member of the Seminole County Retired Educators Association, as I hope you all will be when you retire. And I'm here to let you all know that the Florida Retired Educators Association, our parent company, is sponsoring a 5th grade essay contest. And you, 5th grade teachers have until January 30 to get the essays in to me, Elizabeth Randall, I'm the contact. And the winner, first place winner, gets a... And the winner, first-place winner gets a hundred and fifty dollars. Second-place winner gets a hundred. Third-place winner gets fifty dollars. But what are they writing about? Well, this is our annual contest. And we're asking the students to describe an experience with a grandparent or an older adult who has an impact on their life in a positive way. So I'm leaving this information with you. I have sent emails to all the principals and some contact people in Seminole County. Do you guys have any suggestions about how I can make fifth-grade teachers more aware of this?
If you would, after the the meeting, meet with Dr. Cody, Anna Marie Cody. She can provide you some information.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Jose Aslava.
Good evening. Hello, everyone. I'm the band director at Lake Hell High School. Seminole County has a really strong education system and really strong performing arts programs. Many band directors had questions on the purpose of Seminole County Marching Band Festival as we have our district festival the following week, where everyone can come attend and watch that event as well. The festival used to be organized and funded by the Optimist Club, and that has not happened in over a decade. They used to come and like give every program a big chunk of money to help fund the programs. So a lot of us have questions like, what is the purpose of this event nowadays, since that's not a thing anymore? Us band directors work really hard for our students. I personally attend and supervise about fifty events a year for my students under one singular band stipend. Like, I work about seventy-five hours a week at my school and get paid for like a normal job. We work hard, and I don't know if anyone realizes that we do not get paid for our summer band camps. And a lot of us do two to three weeks of summer rehearsals to prep for football season, where we do not get compensated. And for me, like, I'm not asking anything about compensation right now. Just I have a question about the festival. Like, if this festival is really like crucial for the school board, is there a way that the school board can help fund that program? Help us with transportation costs and travel costs and everything? You know, try and kind of meet in the middle of what all the bandages are feeling for this event? Because we all work really hard. And I think we just want what's best for our kids. And that's kind of all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That concludes public comment, non-agenda items. Superintendent, any closing remarks?
No closing remarks. But again, thank you all for your participation in the numerous activities that we've had since the beginning of the the school year. And looking forward to some some really exciting announcements before our next school board meeting.
Now, I'm curious.
I know.
Okay, okay. No other business? Oh, Member Sanchez.
I just want to say one thing. Welcome home, Dr. Weisong.
Yeah, welcome back. Okay, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.